November 4th, 2025. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the North Wall of the Legislative Chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
President.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Fahy.
Here.
Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First, we have items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, and B being a call for meeting and set Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Do I have a motion a second for both?
So moved.
Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our resolutions, and after that, we'll have a public hearing item. So first, our resolutions, items C through F, which we can take and block if desired. Motion by Roger, second by Morgan, and we still have item G separately. So that'll be just the resolutions for now. Any questions or comments by board or public on the resolutions, C through F? If none, we'll vote.
Oh, Commissioner Fahy, I'm sorry. Were you voting yes?
Yes.
I apologize for cutting that off early. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing item, item G, which is a resolution to consider the SID 590 tax levy from amount originally approved on the October 14th, 2025 resolution. Since it is a public hearing item, I will now open up the public hearing, and I know Mr. Clerk has some comment.
Dan H., Douglas County Clerk. So this is just the overall levy is staying at 90 cents for this SID. They just needed to change the breakout between their general fund and their bond fund. So today's action would put the 40 cents for the general fund and 50 cents for their bond fund. It was, the bond was at zero originally submitted, and they contacted us and told us that they intended to change the amount. So the overall levy staying the same. It's just the breakout between the general and bond is being corrected today.
Any comments or questions during this public hearing? If none, I will close the public hearing. Where's the will of the board? We'll still approve adjourned by Roger, second by Morgan. Any final questions? If not, we'll vote. Thank you. We will now go into Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson.
President.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Fahy.
Here.
Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. First, we have Section 1, items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, and B being the approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, November 11th, 2025. Do I have a motion a second for both?
Sure.
Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Please vote. Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda, items A through F. Do I have a motion second for discussion?
No move.
Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Any questions or comment on consent agenda items, A through F? If none, we'll vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner. Can you cancel that, Mr. Clerk?
I just want a quick question about item B.
Okay.
There are a series of agreements on grant-funded programs for juvenile services here, and on the agenda itself, the dollar amount does not appear. And so I was just wondering, we don't have to go through program by program, but is there a total for the 1 through 9 grant agreements that we're talking about here today?
About three weeks ago, Kim Havakati, Deputy County Administrator, about three weeks ago, this board approved $400,000 for stability services to be used by the home program. That $400,000 is included in these nine contracts. These contracts run on a fee-for-service basis. So when you use them, then we have the funds available to pay for that daily rate. So the max will be 400,000. It could be less. It just depends upon use.
Okay. And I think we touched on this 400,000 in the last few weeks. Is that right?
Correct.
The source of this was?
Sherwood Fund grants.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others on content agenda? If not, we'll go ahead and vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Section 5, recognitions and proclamations, of which we have one, item A, resolution observing Operation Green Light in honor of our nation's veterans. Here today, we have Director Benson Elmore from Veterans Service.
Benson Elmore, Director of Veterans Services. First, let me just simply say thank you to Mr. Chair and the commissioners for your support for our veterans and on behalf of veterans in the service to veterans. I thank you also for the leading support of the National Association of Counties, the National Association County Veteran Service Officers, and also Nebraska Association of Counties. With that said, am I permitted to read the resolution or?
Okay, yeah, go for it.
Whereas the residents of Douglas County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed to our citizens. And whereas Douglas County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for good, for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow, to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas this board appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that with distinction as a green light for Veterans County, this board hereby declares from November 4th, 2025, through November 11th, 2025, as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our former service members and the men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Be it further resolved, that in observance of Operation Green Light, this board hereby encourages its residents and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of the residence or place of business dated this 4th, the 4th, excuse me, 4th day of November, 2025. Again, thank you very much, commissioners. Also, I want to give a special thank you to our community partners. We have the Hall of Justice being lit green this whole week, also the Bob Carey Pedestrian Bridge, which will be November 10th, and also the Maple Ridge Retirement Center, Physicians Mutual, Varian Credit Union, Centrus Federal Credit Union, Union Bank and Trust, Valley City Hall, and also Metro Community College, which is a new addition to our, to our partners. So again, thank you very much for your support and your dedication to our veterans. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Elmore. Do I have a motion a second for that resolution read?
No move.
Motion by Borgeson, second by Kavanaugh. And big picture, just in case any of our listeners are not too overly familiar with Operation Green Light, what is kind of behind that? No, Director Elmore or Commissioner Borgeson?
So this is actually the fifth anniversary of Operation Green Light, and it was started with some service officers in New York State. They came up with a plan to basically honor service members by shining a green light. It kind of caught fire with the governor there, and so it kind of swept into a brush fire, you know, so to speak. And so this is a small part, a small way we show our appreciation to veterans, whether it's the residents shining a green light on the exterior of their, of their house or interior, or businesses, you know. We've had a lot of support with businesses, you know, purchasing green lights and shining green lights for veterans. So it's a small token, a small appreciation that folks can see that, you know, green is typically something that's reserved for the military. So it just, it kind of took on a life of its own, and so we're very grateful of it and appreciate it to those who support us in that endeavor.
Great. Thank you so much. Yep. Very good. So thank you again for reading that resolution for us. We do have a motion a second. We'll go ahead and vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Thank you, Director. With that, we're going to move forward in our agenda here. Under committees, we have finance budget report as presented, and then under community services, we have a resolution allocating $200,000 to various food banks within Douglas County as a result of the pausing of SNAP benefits. I want to thank Commissioner Rogers for spearheading this effort on behalf of the board and to all seven commissioners for signing on to support this effort. So with that, I will toss it to Commissioner Rogers in case you want to give any words on the resolution.
No. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to give the history of it, actually, I had a conversation with Councilman Festus and the city was giving some that turned into a brief mention with Commissioner Kavanaugh Tuesday, right after the board meeting, and a couple of other mentions with some, with other commissioners, ended with a conversation with the Health Director, and as everybody heard the news, the momentum what was building. And so I want to thank all the commissioners for their response to it and their willingness to do it. And as I said in several settings, my hope is that this would, this will be over pretty soon, and it will take care of itself. But I think just about the general response of the community, it was, was in the right spirit, and I just want to thank everybody up here for supporting it and for the spirit of the community and looking out for our fellow citizens. I'd move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, second by Borgeson. And we also have Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I'm in wholehearted agreement with my colleague, Commissioner Rogers, on this. When it came up, I think in the discussion last week over a grant cutback for aid to mothers and newborn children, it occurred to us, and I had discussion with Commissioner Rogers at that point, that this was broader than just that grant. I think we're all aware of the holdup in Washington of these supplemental food funds called SNAP, which affects millions of people nationwide and tens of millions of people, or tens of thousands of people in our community. And it seems unfortunate because there is money available in a contingency fund in Washington, which is begrudgingly, I think, being allocated out, not in full. And so we're faced with a situation where going into the winter and going into the holiday season, we would have mothers and children and families left without adequate food, and that's not something that I think any of us are going to tolerate. So if Washington won't act, we will, and I commend Commissioner Rogers for taking the lead on this. And this money is the beginning, not the end, of our commitment to make sure that everybody in our community has adequate food. The four freedoms are made up of one that says freedom from want. And if we're going to be the richest and most powerful country on earth, we better be able to feed everybody. It's questionable who in Washington is, is responsible for this cutback of basic food to American families when we're squandering money all over the place on dance halls and aid to farm competitors and everything else. But we can't feed our own people. So we'll do what we can here locally, and this is a beginning of what I hope will be a long, as long as this crisis continues, support of adequate food for all families in our community. I think we do have some folks here from some of our major food banks, and we'd like to hear from them as well. But I want to thank Commissioner Rogers and all of my colleagues here for unanimously getting together in a bipartisan manner to make sure that there's adequate food for families, mothers and children going into the holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I will take a quick round and say, Chelsea, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know we have the executive director from Heartland Hope, and that could maybe speak to what they are seeing on the ground level with individuals in need of food and other items.
Yeah, so we're already seeing at our pantry.
Because you, I'm sorry, because you said your name for the record.
Yes, Chelsea Salafu with Heartland Hope Mission. So we're already seeing at every pantry an increase between 25% to 50% more people that are coming in with need for additional food assistance. We are anticipating to see those numbers at least double. Yesterday, we're still working on looking at the full impact. We understand that the partial funding of SNAP that has been approved and will be distributed will still have a huge impact, right? So there's going to be delay in payments getting out, and then at about half percent, we're still running numbers, but we're estimating that's going to have an impact of about $5 million of loss in the Omaha metro area. Again, that is a very rough estimate. We're just getting updates and trying to look at what that impact is. Going into Thanksgiving, we know that increase is going to be even higher than double digits because of the cost to provide a Thanksgiving meal for families. So we've already, already seen a huge jump in numbers and anticipate that to continue even with a partial SNAP approval.
Yeah, thank you so much for, for being here and sharing what you're seeing at the ground level and for being one of the partners in this resolution.
Yeah, and can I just say thank you so very much? We are so grateful that the commissioners are considering this. There is such a huge need right now on the ground, and we couldn't make this happen without the community support. So thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Just real quick, Chelsea, this impacts a lot of people in our community. Could you give us an estimate of how many people are actually, I don't know what the exact phrase was, but are threatened with a food shortage in their families?
So I can give you some ideas. So we know there's this, again, this is rough numbers, somewhere around 60,000 people in the Omaha metro area that are on SNAP. We could get, this is off the top of my head, we could get some more certain numbers on that. But we also have all of the people that have been furloughed or are not getting paid. There's a lot of people at the airport right now through TSA that have already missed quite a bit of pay. There's also military benefits, which we have been working with off it and understand that even though the military has been paid, the pay hasn't been the full amount. So there are some military families that are also being impacted by this besides those that are just furloughed or not being paid. So I think that larger number, I'm not sure, but it's a huge number of people that are being impacted, and we know that because I would say right now, we're seeing a 25% to 50% increase, and we haven't felt the impact of the SNAP cuts yet. So like I said, I'm sure those numbers will at least double. The other thing I think it's worth noting is that for every, typically, a pantry will provide one meal for every 10 meals provided by SNAP. So when you look at it that way, if we're usually providing one meal, if SNAP is 50% funded, that means we would need to be able to provide five more meals to our community. That's a huge number.
Thank you. And having worked with you before during the COVID crisis, I want to thank you for your great work. Keep it up, and please keep us notified as to the impact of this as it, as it goes on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me go to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, obviously, we have seven commissioners' names on this resolution, and there's a good reason for that. We, we all have hearts, we all have empathy. I am concerned, and I'll tell you why. I'm supporting it, I'm going to vote for it, but I'm concerned. Our process procedurally, 99% of the time since I've been here, when an appropriation is approved, it's signified as budgeted or not budgeted if we're going through the budget process. If it's not determined to be budgeted or not budgeted for approval, the source of the funding has always been clearly identified. Now, maybe one of the commissioners can speak to this, but it's been a concern to me for the last couple of days. I didn't know, ignorance is no excuse, I didn't know that it wouldn't be identified in this, in this resolution. I think that's, that's a problem. Somebody needs to speak to that. For example, if we're going to go into a position and seek general fund or emergency funding for, or we're going to go out and try to get it from another fund, the other fund should probably know. If they do know, why aren't they here speaking to it? I'm not, I'm not trying to be a burr in the craw here. This is going to pass. But if we have to dig into general fund and we have to go into the cash reserve, I think the folks at Douglas County should know that. They should know it right now, not after we vote for this. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. As a quick response, I'm going to give it to Commissioner Rogers and then proceed from there.
And to Commissioner Friend, it, yeah, sorry for not being identified. There was, I did have a conversation with Director Hughes at the Health Department and had a conversation with Lloyd Purse, and so it will, it will come out of the Health Department, Health Department's fund, not reserve.
Thank you. Let me go to Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I just want to add my thanks to Commissioner Rogers for bringing this forward to the board. As stated, we all have serious concerns about what's going on and making sure that our residents are able to eat. But I also want to thank the community, including the mayor for his food drive, the eating establishments that have stepped forward for offering free meals to individuals that are not able to afford it, other elected officials that I've seen on social media that are holding food drives themselves, and community organizations and agencies that are doing the same. To me, this shows that we, as a community in times of crisis and times of need, put the political rhetoric down and do what's right for our citizenry. So again, I just want to thank everybody out there that's paying attention to this and doing the right thing with this, and thank again my colleague, Commissioner Rogers, for bringing this forward to the board, and hopefully this will get taken care of very soon.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions on this item?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm sorry, I got here a little bit late. Are we on the presentation or a resolution?
No, we're on Community Services Committee, resolution on $200,000.
Okay. I just want to point out that the board should consider, and the public should consider, that the responsibility for a lot of this belongs with your Congress because they cannot pass a budget. Every year, we have the same thing, and they're up there arguing about it yet. It's not just the fault of a president, it's the fault of a Congress that cannot do their job. So please put the blame where it goes and tell your Democrats in Congress to get together with some Republicans and finish the darn budget instead of another continuing resolution that still isn't done. That's not what they're there for, to delay things. And the responsibility for a lot of this goes on them, not the President of the United States. By the way, he has been trying to clean up a lot of the fraud in various systems. I don't want illegal immigrants forcing me out of my home because of taxes. Do you? That's one of the things that he's cleaning up in this country, is the fraud that has been gone on and on and on because Congress doesn't do their job. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this item? Let me go to Commissioner Fahy.
I will take a moment to reflect on something that was restored said and something I received at least one of, from one concerned citizen. I generally receive supportive messages for this very worthy endeavor that I'm proud to sponsor and vote for. But what bothers me is that the tenor that, that it comes to me as the people opposed to it is that we are cloaked in this sort of faux austerity and this faux fiscal conservatism, which is say, don't spend money on this because spending money on this is bad, but yet they want us to pour money into other economically wasteful projects such as housing noncriminal, undocumented immigrants at our county jail or doing other things. So let it, I think my message would just be, let us deal with one another honestly, which is to say, it's not so much about the fiscal conservatism because there's a gold-plated ballroom going up in Washington as we speak, paid for by your tax dollars. So let us at least say, we just want to spend the money on different things. I don't want it spent on a graft-fueled ballroom. I want it spent on feeding the citizens of Douglas County. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Fahy. And before we get to a vote, I think there's a quick friendly amendment here, trying to get to the actual copy of the resolution. I think, Patrick, do you want to clarify what you just mentioned to me real quick?
You don't mind, Mr. Chair? So the last paragraph, and now therefore, so the prior paragraph lists out all eight organizations, but the final paragraph just lists out, just lists the food bank for the Heartland. So I guess it just, when we, whoever makes the motion, which I guess it has been made, so sorry, if we can make a friendly amendment, like you said, to just include the other seven organizations in that last paragraph, then we should be fine.
Right after, yep. Yep, okay. So Commissioner Rogers asked for unanimous consent to fix that revision, if that's okay with the rest of the board. Very good, so that all of the partners are listed there in the final paragraph as well. With that, any other comments or questions on this item? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. And just a quick note, I forgot to mention, I did intentionally skip the one presentation we had scheduled today from one of our partners in the community that deals with homelessness. They were going to present today, but there was some scheduling conflict, so they will come on the 18th instead of today. So that will be tabled for now. With that being said, we'll continue down our committees. Under Human Resources, we have Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service as presented. We do have a need for executive session today for the purpose of legal advice, litigation, and personnel. Do I have a motion second for that? Motion by Morgan, second. do I have a motion second for that, motion by Morgan, second by Rogers, let's go ahead and vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
The board will now go into executive session for the purpose of legal advice, litigation, and personnel, quick reminder that there's no meeting next week, the board will be on recess for Veterans Day, and also quick reminder that there is a Human Resources Committee meeting today at 1:00 PM, thank you.
All right. All right, all right. Commissioner Kavanaugh back there still?
He is, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Dan.
Oh, the Sunday thing first.
The Neighborhood Act, it's over.
Hey Jim, are you voting yes? You guys ask Jim if he's voting yes, please. Motion to reconvene adjourned by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Friend. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Kavanaugh did not vote. Motion, or we are adjourned. Motion passes, we are adjourned at 10:32 AM.